You're listening to another episode of Mr. Aller's Neighborhood. This is the place we're entitled to Brad's opinion. And now for your host, Brad Aller.
Well, good Thursday to all y'all. Today we have Larry H. Scott, candidate and assumed next place member from place four, since you have no opponent, which kind of changes the turn of our conversation. Now, we could talk about what you plan to do as opposed to what you would hope to do. And so, God willing, you know, that you'll, you won't be beat by a right end. You don't, you're not worried about that, are you?
Well, it's always a possibility.
Neither my closest, sir. You can move it around.
It's always a possibility.
It is, but I don't think, I'm going to put my money on you, sir. So, by the way, Taylor, did you get the clip loaded up just in case when we're ready to roll? Okay, good. See, that's why he's such a, such a champ. But anyway, no, I, I assume very strongly that you'll be elected, but I know you don't want to take that group for granted because it's not a good look, but I'll take it for granted. Because, you know, but anyway, we're going to talk about several things that have been big, big items here on the city council's radar. You know, one big thing has been, that's been discussed on this show several times is going to be like the future of the golf course and things of that nature. Also, we can talk about maybe some of the bond issues because that's also a big issue in this election. You know, the last year's bond issue and also the overall debt issues. And anything else you with the listening audience would like to jump in on, just throw a question on the board and we'll see what we got for you. But before we jump into all that, we're going to talk about our sponsors. I got, I got a couple of new sponsors since the last time you've been here. So, there you go. CrossFit Burleson, that's not a new sponsor. He's been here since the very beginning. Daniel over at CrossFit Burleson. Check out CrossFitBurleson.com to check out the memberships and the plans and the other stuff. It's a, it, it's, it's a good training program. It's not like you just go there and try to figure it out yourself. They got professionals there to help you with all of that and memberships and classes and things like that. So it's behind Stone Soup Cafe over on 317 Southwest Wilshire. Also Shandy, I'll be having her on in a couple of weeks as you've been probably well aware of that she's running for place four in the school board race. But she, she comes on the show a lot for real estate conversations and she's very, very knowledgeable and I hope she can take that expertise to the school board. I mean, she's running against two fine people. But still, I think her experience will be very, very valuable to the school board because she knows real estate and she knows the impact it has and what schools have to do with real estate values. So thank you, Shandy. Also, of course, Otto at our place. I'll be going there right after this. I'm meeting one of my networking friends there for lunch. That's where I do all my business. A lot of people do business there. I believe you have a sign there. Is that right?
I've got a sign with a couple of others out front of the building.
Yeah, there you go. So, our place though is a great place to do business and I really like the staff because they, they, they're there for a long time and so you get to know them. So, check that out. Also Chris over to, at the Wild Cigar and Culture. He's got specials on Monday, Wednesday and Friday afternoons, early evenings. And so it's, it's a very busy place in those times. So go there. Like a cigar, but you don't know really what your, your preference is. The tobacconist will help you out with that. It's a good bar, a good open bar. So, why don't you, not open bar, bring your cash. I can't say an open bar, but I say cash bar. So, he would prefer you pay. Anyway, Wild Cigar and Culture over at Standard. Also Tiffany, she's got a special on, she'll be on next Tuesday. Tiffany Nika over at Local Life, the magazine's out. You're in it, aren't you?
Yes, the Local Life Magazine that just came out. They had a candidate section and several of the candidates showed up and we all stood there and got our picture taken.
And there's like a little article about you, is there not?
There's a short article for each candidate.
Well, there you go. See, now that's what I like about Tiffany. She's very community oriented because she wants everybody to know the candidates and what they stand for and whatnot. Local Life Magazine, it comes out once a month. And like I said, she'll be out next Tuesday talking about this, the, the summer special. She's trying to generate some enthusiasm for here because it's, you know, a lot of people start, need to start thinking about it. It's summertime. So if you want to advertise your business, she's the person to do it with. Also, Gail at Southern Jim. You know, we talked about how she's trying to move from the top floor to the bottom floor and it just, just when they seem to be making progress, some glitch happened. So now the target date's late April. It was supposed to be, they were hoping to have it done by now, but all these shortages or glitches with the contractor or you name it. But she's, they're working pretty hard. They have a big sale going on. Actually, they're trying to, you know, before they move all their inventory, they're trying to, you know, get rid of some of the inventory. So they have a pretty good, good deal going on right now. So go up to see her at the top of the Windmillor Building. Also, we have one of my newer clients or sponsors, if you will, first do detailing services. They'll come out to you to wash and detail your car. They have various levels of service, but you know, we, obviously we have enough car washes, but you know, it's still a hassle to go and have to take it out and go and get in line and fumble with the credit card or whatever else here. They'll just, if you're at work or you're at home, they'll come out to you, have a power wash system set up and they'll take care of all that for you. And so to get in contact, call Caleb Patino at 817-776-0478 or hit firstdoodetailing.com and you can set up a schedule. He's going to be doing my car and my wife's car pretty soon. We've got to set up a time. And it's, and he's in a networking group and it's already started off pretty well for him. And also, we have another new sponsor. This is DeeDee Simpson with Thrive, which is built, it's small, it's small business software. It does a lot of different things. It's not just an SEO. It's, it's the whole, whole package of promoting your business and handling your business. They have a section that handle your financial areas and all this and how to alert people about new, new stuff going on with your business. And, and your presence on Google, for example, and your presence on Facebook, the calendar. I use it. It's a good deal. DeeDee will be on a week from today to talk about all this. I don't really call it just social media because it's really a whole lot more than that. It's a complete package to help you promote your business. And one more, Texas Farm Bureau, Melissa Harmon, 682-804-0534. The, the last four members, well, not the last four, Gala and Melissa, no, the last four, yeah. Gala and Melissa and DeeDee and Gala and Caleb, brother, they're all BNI members. So that's how I got to meet them and they, and so she said, I can maybe save you some money. And she did. She checked out my insurance. I got lower rates and increased coverage on the house, which we needed because she would have me tell you all that it's a, you know, it's going to be tornado season, you know? And so make sure your coverage is adequate because you know, house prices have gone so high that who knows what's going on with them. You need to make sure you're taken care of. Any nonprofits got going on, Taylor? Let's see. Yes, of course. Harvest House, oh, we're at Lost Oak Vineyard. We're going to have Vineyard and Vibes for the Harvest House. It's April 23rd for about noon to six. You need tickets for this event. So go onto the website on Harvest House and there's a QR code and you can buy your tickets. It's $15 to do it now or $20 at the door. Also, you can buy a glass of wine ahead of time. They'll give you some credit. Or if you're not really into wine that much, but you want to help out the cause, you can donate a glass of wine. And that's what I call a good friend right there. Donating a glass of wine. Yeah. But anyway, they could have a lot of local musicians, including a friend of mine named Kyle Sherman, who is very talented, a former member of the BNI group I was with. Also, I believe we have something for Reinspire. Yeah, it is barbecue cookoff at the Johnson County Sheriff's Posse. It's next Saturday, well, a week from Saturday on the 15th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It's free. They're going to have a cookoff, they're going to have a kids' corral and the petting zoo and various entertainments. This is for Reinspire, which is an organization that Shandy helps run that is for foster children that are aging out of the system and helps them acclimate to adult life. And I think that's about it. Who knows? There's so many things going on in Burleson, May and April and, and June, so many different events and groups going on. Okay, Mr. Scott, what would you like to talk about first? You have, did you have anything in mind that?
Well, we can talk about the election. We can talk about how to run a campaign.
Well, let's do that at the end. Okay. How about, the first thing that I was thinking of was the, the, the golf course situation, because I've been talking about that with Ronnie, with Victoria, with the mayor. And I'd like to see, hear your perspective on what's been going on now. I will say this, you go. This has been a source of contention about who's getting the credit for what. And this, this has been the works for well near a decade, right? Despite what you may have heard on this very platform, in fact, about it being, you know, a current mayor's idea. And it's been, but this has been discussed and studied well before that.
Yeah, there's been a lot of talk about what to do around the golf course for many years and a lot of people have very similar ideas. As far as credit, I don't, I don't think anybody should take credit for any decisions on the council because we work as a team. I think as a team, the city should take credit for the pluses and the minuses and the good and the bad. But my opinion, I don't think the city should get involved in convention centers, buying, building, owning convention centers or even running convention centers because we're not the professionals in that business. We need to leave that up to the professionals. But I am for bringing in some resort facility that would have convention, convention facilities available, small and large. Would have resort facilities available where if families came, that the participant for the convention could go to the convention, go to the meetings and the rest of the family could enjoy their day. And tourism, they could bring in families into this convention center. And while they're there, the groups can do tourism around town. They can go to Old Town, visit Old Town and spend their money, have a good time and tell other people about the city of Burleson.
I, no, I'm not familiar with all the details, with all the aspects of the planning of the golf course, but, and all these changes that have been studied for so long. But it's my understanding that, that both the options of having the city own it or bringing in an outside partner are going to, they are available. I mean, it isn't like we're heading for one or the other, as far as I know. But as far as, you know, I've been on here, I've been an advocate for having a convention center. I'm not saying for me that I have to have it a certain way for me to be satisfied. If, if the way that you described it works better, then I'm for it. Why, but why do you think it wouldn't work for us if we bought a convention or built one and similar to like what Cleveland has, why would it not work for us?
I don't feel like that the city has the professionalism to run a business like that. I think there are professionals out there that are qualified to run that business. That's what they do for a living and that's how they are successful. The city could eventually, I guess, have trained professionals, bring them on staff that could run a facility.
That would be my question. If we owned it, would we not hire the staff that are experienced professionals?
We could increase the staff. We could bring in experienced professionals.
Would it, by having the city own it though, would it not give it a bit of control about who uses it? I mean, if it's a private developer, would that private developer be restrained by, let's say, Burleson standards or expectations? I mean, it's one thing to, let's say you have a, you know, a group meeting there that's, you know, you know, the, you know, Elks Club or something like that. But what if you have a group that wants to use it, use this private facility that really don't represent the standards of the community?
Well, we'd have to partnership with the private industry and we'd have to have some control over it. But even if we own the facility, I don't know how the laws would read that we could restrict people from using it. That would be the city attorney's issue there. We'd have to talk to the city attorney about that. But I wouldn't think that we could restrict anybody and everybody from using it unless they meet our specific criteria.
Well, and that's a good point because I know a couple of years ago Arlington had this issue because they were having an adult themed convention being proposed in their convention center, let's put it that way. And a lot of people were very upset by that. And I just wonder if, you know, if it, if that could be prevented either, either way. I mean, if you have a private developer and it's his money or his corporation's money, would, I just don't, would there be any way we could tell this developer, we don't want these type of conventions? We're not looking for, you know, radical groups or whatever, or, you know, adult themed conventions, shall we say? How, how could we restrain that?
Well, as far as my opinion, I've got opinions on what we could do, but until I get on council and meet with the attorney, I would not want to speak for the city or speak legally on what we could do and what we could not do.
Well, that's a wise response. I could just ramble all I want, but I guess, but I'm not held accountable for legal routine. But my, my, my stance on this has always been, we're fortunate to have two locations and Pathways and First Baptist that make their facilities available. But they are limited in size and they, and they are limited in some ways about what can be done there. So we add, I think we'd need this type of facility for the community. Now, I know it's worked for some, you know, I mentioned the Fort Worth, the Omni and the Dallas Omni, and there you are. But, you know, I just think we need to have some sort of meeting place that those Chamber of Commerce can do their things or, you know, if you want to have small mini conventions, you know, or, you know, like the Kiwanis Club or the, you know, Johnson County Four H Club or whatever, you know, we need something like that, that that's, we, at this point, we can't provide.
Well, bringing in a private industry to do this would provide that facility for us. It wouldn't be any different than if the city built it and owned it, but I think we have other uses for city funds at this time. I mean, we're, we're borrowing money right now. We've got a big bond. We're borrowing money for roads, buildings, infrastructure, water lines, sewer lines. We don't need to be investing that money in a business.
Well, before anything has to happen though, the voters, Burleson are going to have to pass on it because that's city owned property, that golf course and all the softball fields and all that. And so there'd have to be a vote on that. And my, my assumption is that there, before the voters pass that, that election to allow the city to sell the softball fields, et cetera, et cetera, and put this kind of facility in place, the whole plan better be out there for everybody to see. It is, it can't be doing done in pieces. Like we'll sell the land and then we'll tell you later about how we're going to do this. No, no, I'm sure the city, the voters would want to know. If we're selling the land, we want to see what's going to replace it. And that may be coming on your term.
Yeah, it's definitely parkland. The citizens own it and the citizens would have to vote what we do with it if we want to change it out.
Well.
And as far as, as building another building there, as building our own convention center, that would be another bond.
Yeah.
It's not like we have the cash to do it. Now, I know some cities like Tulsa, Oklahoma, they, they build a savings plan and they saved over 10 years and paid cash for their convention center. But I don't believe that would be good use of the citizens' money to put it in a savings account. Their money needs to be used for infrastructure now.
Let's talk about the bond issues, you know, that passed last month. What was your view on it? I know it passed narrowly. I know the mayor pushed it pretty hard, even though one of the election issues is his previous stance on debt. And then you have him pushing really hard to increase that debt, you know, and he sat here and said, you know, well, this is necessary. And I agreed. I agreed it was necessary. But there's a lot, there was a lot of opposition to it. What was your view on that?
My opposition was there. I did not want an $86.6 million bond at one time. Now, that doesn't mean that we pull the money all out at one time. We don't go get a loan for 86.6 million. It comes out over six years. We've already used 1.3 million of it last year for some engineering work on Hewland Street to determine how wide that street needs to be and where we need to work on it. We're going to pull out nine million this year for some more evaluation, 17 million next year, I think 29 million the next year. Over a six-year period, we'll pull all this money out. And it has to be used for roads, infrastructure, water, sewer, buildings. It can't be used for anything that's not sustainable. It can't be used for shrubbery or salaries or anything like that. So it's going to be used for the right things. I'll make sure of that and the city council will make sure of that because the law will govern it and we don't want to violate the law. But you can't pull out a bond that's not sustainable for the product over the length of the bond. So if it's a 20-year bond, you have to develop a product that'll last 20 years. And that's where we come into the roads and the water line, the sewer and the buildings again.
Don't, don't we need all these things?
We need all these things, but do we need them all at once? What's going to happen is, and it's going to sneak up on us, as we pull these bonds out over a six-year period, after three or four years, along with the previous bonds that we pulled out that we're still paying on from the last 10 or 15 years, we're paying principal and interest on all those bonds. It's going to accumulate and it's going to increase the INS, the interest and sinking on our tax rate. Our tax rate's made up of a general fund, maintenance fund, and it's made up of interest and sinking, which is debt. And as these bonds get pulled out over the next six years, we have to start paying them back in about three years. Then the INS is going to increase, our tax rate will eventually have to go up, which will increase your taxes a little bit. And that's, that's the backend of a bond that we don't recognize when we vote for the bond.
If we hadn't passed that bond though, would we, wouldn't our infrastructure issues be, become more and more critical as time went on? Overcrowded streets? Sewer, sewer needs, things of that nature?
We have sewer needs that we're taking care of with the city of Fort Worth. They're helping us out on that. The streets, a lot of the streets that we're rebuilding with this bond, there's opportunity that we could have repaired the streets ourselves and waited later for a bond to replace the street or completely repair, repay the street. There are things that we can do maintenance on right now, that where we don't have to pull out a bond to completely rebuild or redo it.
Well, Mr. Johnson's on record saying he, he opposed it also and not for pretty similar reasons. He said that a lot of it was the expense that was going to accrue because the interest rates, you know, we got to pay it back and the interest rates are rising. You know, the bond, if we're, if we sold a bunch of bonds now at one rate, or, you know, maybe a year ago, I'll put it that way. We sold a bunch of bonds a year ago at a lower rate. And now we've, of course, we've seen interest rates rise and they're not going to come down anytime soon. Is the expense of that bond going to be greater than maybe we had anticipated when it was narrowly passed last May?
I think the expense of this bond before the six years is over with, it's going to be a realization that we don't want. Now you can geo reference and refinance a bond. So if it's a geo bond, you can refinance it if the interest rate goes down, economy gets better, you can refinance it. And that'll give us a little relief on our taxes in the future. And we've got a very good finance director and we've got a very good city manager that watches these things daily. And if they come up, they will refinance part of the bond.
Well, and Mr. Johnson's view also was that, you know, he's pretty conservative fiscally and also that his opponent, Mr. Fletcher, ran against Mr. Shetter based on what they consider to be excessive bond use and excessive debt. And now we're adding to the debt. Is that a legitimate view or is that just campaign stuff?
No, we're, we're actually adding to the debt. Anytime we pull out a geo bond, we add to the debt because the previous bonds aren't at this time falling off. We're still paying on them until 2030, most of them. So it's just an accumulation of debt right now.
Okay. Well, are we in any kind of debt crisis as was the big issue in 2020?
We're not in any kind of a debt crisis.
That was, that was the contention that we were in or heading towards a debt crisis.
We're not in debt crisis at all. It's just a matter of how we manage our money. A lot of this stuff, we have cash available and a lot of this stuff's not information that I have yet until I get on the council, but some of it is. And I know we have a lot of cash stored right now. And I don't believe we should be a savings account for the citizens' money. We should use that cash. And a lot of these projects on these roads and stuff, we could have used cash for.
Well, Bill Janisch has a very lengthy response. I, sorry, Bill, I don't know if I have the time or the energy or the lung capacity to read it, but, but basically is that the, if I could just summarize it, they rushed into the bond package without proper information or proper notification that basically a lot of people really didn't know what was into the bond. I've, I've had these discussions before. I know that the three that voted against the bond on the city council, their main contention wasn't the money wasn't necessary at some point, but that it was going to be used. It wasn't specific in how the money was going to be used.
Well, it was specific. They did put out a booklet, a nice little booklet that explained every penny of where the money was going to be used.
But that was after the, the vote had been taken.
That was after the vote had been taken.
And that, that's their contention. So, you know, so they, they created one, yes. And, and I, you know, Mr. Fletcher showed it to me on a previous show and it looked impressive and I was, you know, it looked good to me, but that information wasn't available when the vote was taken.
Not that I know of, no.
No, it wasn't. They, that's, that was the.
At the time the vote was taken, there was a lot of worry about how the manage, how the money would be managed, how we'd track it, how we'd keep up with it, what it's going to be spent on.
Yeah.
So I think the council and the city heard the citizens and they put out a booklet to explain to them exactly what it was going to be used on. And did a good job on the follow-up.
Okay. And I, you know, again, when, to be fair, when this was going on in May, I gave it some thought. I'm not a, I live right outside of the city, so I couldn't vote. I probably would have voted for it because I think we'd need these things. Now, knowing what I know now, you know, would that, that might have gave me pause, knowing about interest rates and all the changes there, but I just, I probably would have voted for it and said so on this show. So I don't want to.
Well, I know the city finance policy says that if we can fund a project with cash, we fund it with cash first before we bond it. And I think the cash was available for a lot of these projects.
Well, I guarantee you, you and Ronnie Johnson are on the same wavelength because when he was here last, he had pretty similar comments. I'll see Mr. Johnson on the show on the 27th and, and we'll probably be able to talk about this again. But that, that's, the finances are almost always a big deal in elections and how they're handled and what to spend the money on. And, you know, I'm sure you'll get a lot of questions about that.
I get a lot of questions. We have a good finance policy. It's been proven year over year to be successful. It monitors the way we spend our money, the way we deal with the citizens' property taxes and the sales taxes and the fines and the fees, and it keeps us in line. We have guidelines. That way there's not one person or one committee able to spend money without the citizens' permission.
Well, and if, I haven't talked to Mr. Russell much, but I think he's of a similar nature about, you know, being very frugal with money. Mr. Russell will be on the show. We don't have the calendar in front of me, but in about 10 days, and I bet he has a similar view because this is, I know this has been a, a big factor in a lot of people's decisions about how to vote. Is the money being used properly? Is that bond necessary and all this other business?
Well, Adam Russell will be a great candidate to talk to about it. He's very good with finances. He's very good with real estate. He has a head on his shoulder for numbers. And I'll probably be leaning on him for a lot of information.
Well, and also I know Mr. Green's leaving the council, but I'm sure he'll make his expertise available to y'all because I know he's been considered probably the best voice on the council coming, dealing with real estate issues.
Yeah. Mr. Green's good in real estate and he's a good accountant and they've been leaning on him for a long time and he's going to be missed. But I think Adam Russell will step right in and keep, keep the boat afloat.
Well, speaking of real estate, one of the things that always comes up is multifamily housing. Do you have either any concerns about that or, you know, it's not so much argue for them or against them because, you know, that's not, the city can't really oppose multifamily housing and still stay on this side of the law. But do you have concerns at the direction of multifamily housing in Burleson?
No, I don't have any concerns with it. The city of Burleson puts together a zoning map and they design this zoning map so that you can have multifamilies where they need to be. You can have high density where it needs to be. You can have single-family homes where they need to be, where it all worked together. You can have commercial property where it needs to be.
But zoning can be changed though. I mean.
Zoning can be changed. You'd have to change the zoning ordinance and there's specific guidelines for that, but I don't see that happening anytime in the near future.
Well, that's something I could ask Mr. Russell because he's on the Planning and Zoning Commission right now. Well, I, you know, Mr. Johnson, of course, is on record saying he is not going to be opposing multifamily housing because he doesn't feel like it's right. Mr. Fletcher, I, from what our conversations has not been oppositional to multifamily housing either. But there are people in the town that are.
Well, we need multifamily housing. We need places where young adults can get started. We need places where people want to enjoy living in multifamily homes. They can do it. We don't want to restrict any citizen in this city from living where they enjoy to live.
Well, it's also another problem as well is that, you know, like I always bring my daughter into this, her apartment that she rented for about 18 months cost about the same as my mortgage. And it was, it was a nice apartment, but it wasn't very big. And, and I didn't want to get into a situation like a lot of cities are that they're, the people that work in the city, work for the city, can't live in it. You know, I, you know, I can't imagine many teachers living in Southlake, you know, unless their husband or wife makes tons of money. But just, we didn't want to get into a situation where the people that work in this community for the schools, for the city, for our retail outlets, for the restaurants, have to live outside of it just because they can't afford to live in it. And that's, that's, that's my biggest concern. And I know the other concerns is, you know.
Affordable housing is probably what you're talking about. And I'm all for affordable housing in the city of Burleson. We need to zone it in where it needs to go and we need to have houses that, like you say, the Burleson employees can live in, houses I can live in. I'm retired now on a fixed income. It's not one of those luxuries I have anymore.
Yeah. Well, I know that I couldn't afford my house now. You know, I've been living in it, living in it since 91 and I haven't really thought seriously about moving from there, but if I ever did, I'd be moving down, not up, if I want to stay in this area.
A lot of people don't want to mow a yard. A lot of people don't want to do maintenance.
I don't want to mow a yard.
They want to be free to go and do what they want to do. And if, if living in multifamily housing is the way to do it, then we need to provide that for them.
I will address something in Mr. Johnson's defense. There was accusations, if you want to call them that, by some who are not in favor of his candidacy, that he voted for all these apartments. Well, that's just not true because he wasn't on the city council for several of them that have come up. You know, he was on the school board at that time. And so I think some of people have blamed him unfairly, you know, like they blame him for the Alsberry Apartments, which apparently has a reputation. He wouldn't, he was on school board then, but, you know, so he had nothing to do with that. And that's the kind of thing, at the end, we're going to talk about campaigns. That's one of the things I'd like to address is some of the things that have been said that unfairly, fairly characterize people in this election. fairly characterize people in this election. But anyway, that's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should blame people for voting on the city council because each vote at that time is a different time period. It's different circumstances, different criteria. And if we don't understand what the time was, then we shouldn't be commenting on it.
Well, you know, it's right because, you know, there are times when Mr. Johnson on the school board, he'd vote for something that I didn't really care for as a teacher. But with the perspective of time and the perspective of being here in a podcast where I'm not, you know, directly in the line of fire in a classroom or whatever else, you know, it gives you new perspective. All right. I'm not going to say every decision Ronnie Johnson made at school board I was excited about. But now that I've been out of it a little bit, I could see it from a distance a little bit more. So, well, I could see how that could happen. Maybe I still would have preferred the other way, but I could see why somebody would support how that vote was taken and who voted for what. And I think sometimes people get the wrong idea about their representatives on these boards that, you know, that we, your trustees, you're not really delegates. You're not there to pursue certain ambitions for certain sectors of the city. Your trustees, that we trust management of the city with you, even if sometimes we have to just say, well, I'm not sure I agree with that vote, but I trust the person.
Right. The person has to make a decision for the future and has to make a decision for the whole, the entire community. And that's hard to do a lot of times. I mean, it takes a lot of study, a lot of research. It's not just going to a meeting and voting. It's, it's hours and hours of research and study and phone calls and things like that. So that you can make sure the decision you made is going to be best for everyone in the future.
Well, I'll take a, somebody have a pretty good personal relationship with Victoria. Okay. I've known her since she was a student and, and we've known each other, you know, well for a long time. Has she made every vote she's ever cast have I liked? I, I don't, I can't think of one off the top of my head that I don't, but I'm sure that'd be the case if I studied her voter, voting record. But I trust her. Okay. Maybe I would have voted A and she voted B, you know, I would have preferred she voted A. But I'm not going to, you know, but I trust her because I know how much homework she puts into it, how much thought she puts into it. And I know she doesn't react to, say, temporary political pressures. And as a city council member, you're going to get, you're probably going to get some conversation sent your way if you don't vote the way they want you to vote.
You make all your decisions based on the facts. You can listen to whoever talk about whatever they want to talk about. But when it comes down to voting, you've got to focus on the facts and make the decision based on that.
Yeah. And, and that's one reason I think people need to understand when they vote for school board or vote for city council or county commissioner, you name it, particularly in the nonpartisan way we do these things, which is another thing we'll bring up in a minute. The nonpartisan way in which council and school boards are meant to be run, we have to trust that the people are doing it for the good of the people and not some sort of ideological agenda.
Right. And the citizens have to know that the council is nonpartisan. And that way, by staying nonpartisan, you don't have any outside influence. You don't have an agenda. You don't have somebody else's agenda. The city is in control of your decisions.
And the idea that, no, that to be a member of the city council doesn't mean personally, you know, you don't have political convictions, but you can't put them in front, what's good for the city.
No, absolutely not.
You know, I'm sure.
You can vote Republican, you can vote Democrat, you can register Republican or Democrat, and you can be proud of it. And you can go to meetings. But when it comes to making decisions for the city, you have to make decisions based on the facts at that time, what the city needs.
As far as other issues, you know, that I've heard or, you know, people talk about, they're concerned with the encroachment, if you will, of homelessness. And I've talked to people at, you know, Harvest House, Promises Community, whatever. And they're dealing ground zero, literally with this because they're having, Jennifer Woods has told me that they are, their usage has gone up by about 30% because so many people are, you know, just being squeezed out of the Fort Worth area.
Right.
And they're coming down here. Is that something the city can deal with?
The city can deal with some of that as far, there's, in my experience with the industry I was in for 45 years, I dealt with homeless, I dealt with transients, and I dealt with panhandlers. And there's a big difference. Some people think they're all homeless. Panhandler is somebody that'll stand on the corner and collect money from you. And they'll pretend that they've got a lot of issues. Now, some of them may, but a lot of them don't. And it's a second job for them and it's tax-free money. Then you have the transients that move from town to town in a group and they'll set up tents and camp. And they'll do odd jobs and they won't mess with anybody. They won't bother anybody. They just want to be able to live their lifestyle and make money. The problem is they're trespassing. So on these transient camps, that is their home. Their camp is their home. So if you see an issue with a transient camp, please don't approach that camp. Don't walk into that camp. Call the law enforcement and have them do it. Because that is their home. That'd be no different than one of them walking into your home and you'd want to protect your home and family.
Now, you're a railroad business, right? Okay. And that was a real problem, I understand, around the, around the train yards.
Yeah.
I mean, you just said that, of course, but I'm just, that's, I'm just saying that people don't realize that. You know, that's a, it's a dangerous place to go for a lot of reasons.
Some of the transient camps are gangs. That's the reason the state of Texas is having trouble right now keeping up with how many gang members are in the state because they're becoming transient gangs and moving from city to city to help out where they're needed. So please don't approach these, these, these tents or these communities. Have law enforcement approach them. But getting back to homeless, homeless people aren't homeless because they want to be like the transients are. They have probably medical expenses that came up that they weren't prepared for. At the same time, their vehicle breaks down. It's the only vehicle they had to get to work. Now they lose their job and now they're on the borderline of being homeless. As far as the city, I don't think the city should invest money into homeless buildings to house homeless in. I think the nonprofit organizations in this city are doing a great job. I think when you have people that are getting on the borderline of being homeless, we need to contact one of these nonprofit organizations. And Burleson has a great website.
Absolutely it does. And, and there's a lot of groups that do it. That's one of the.
A lot of groups that do it. They're all on the website. And you can contact any one of them to help anybody that needs help. And they will feed them. They will educate them. They will house them if necessary and get them back on their feet and re-educate them for a career where they can support themselves and support their family and buy another home. And if the city gets involved with that, that's taxpayer money and it doesn't need to be spent on that because we have the facilities now to do it. As far as housing the homeless, the nonprofits and the charity organizations have that taken care of. They know how to do it. They've been doing it for a long time. And that's their business.
Well, also, what you have is if the city got involved and had a facility, where's it going to go? It's, it's one of those things, not in my backyard routines, you know, where are you going to put it? And so, oh, by the way, Jessica Valley Ream says, go Larry. I mean, there you go.
Well, the thing with the homeless, they're not there because they want to be. And they're good people.
Well, that's what Jennifer says, is that it's different.
If you put an organization together to just feed the homeless, for example, then you will always feed them. They'll always be hungry. But if you put an organization like these nonprofit organizations in Burleson have done where they feed them, they educate them, they house them, they teach them how to get back out into the world and make a living. That's the way to take care of the homeless and that's the way to take care of them correctly. So that they can, again, go back out into society and be productive.
Well, and that's what Jennifer and at Harvest House in Debbie at Promises are saying, you know, we have this image in her head about what a homeless person is, some, you know, somebody on the street. But she said, Jennifer says, that's not really what they get at all. They get a lot of people living in their cars or as she calls it, couch hopping. They're going for like temporary place to live for about a week and then they go somewhere else. And a lot of these people had jobs. Some of them have jobs. It just, the, some bad experiences have put them in a financial straits. And we're getting more of that now than we ever had. And, you know, we can blame what we ever want to blame it on, but it just that I think the city's going to be more and more called upon to do, to maybe support the nonprofits, you know, financially or otherwise. You know, of course, then you get other issues about, are they faith-based? Is that going to be allowed and that kind of stuff? But it is becoming known or more visible is a better way of putting it. And I think first, and I think my opinion is that that may be one of the issues you deal with during your term, more than you might have anticipated.
It's something I've dealt with for a long time. I can handle that and we can work together.
Well, then you'll be a really good asset to have on the council. No kidding.
We can take care of that problem when it's here. I mean, I don't see it becoming a big problem. The poverty level in Burleson is 6.7%. That's a third of any city. We have a great city. We have great resources.
We do. And we have a tremendous.
Major problem.
Well, we do have a tremendous nonprofit network. And I've been very privileged from this vantage point to see all that. It's, you know, we have, you know, like Next Step Women's Center is also a routine guest on the show. And it's the sacrifice and selflessness of these people that work on these things is a blessing to us.
Unbelievable how many people volunteer in this city for different things. Almost everyone I talk to is volunteer for one thing or another at one time or another.
Let's talk about the election a little bit. You made a video and I think this is its world premiere, in fact. So, and you're going to put it on your page later, I assume.
Yeah, it's the second video or commercial that I made on voting. Trying to get people out to vote. There's nearly 27,000 voters in the city of Burleson, registered voters. And like one of my commercials said, less than 2,300 voted in the last city election.
I saw that one. I posted it on my pages.
Thank you.
And, and I got people responded to it. But Taylor, if you would, if you'd run that,
Who holds the reins to your community's future? Who wields authority over the management of your tax dollars? How did they attain such power? Hi, I am Larry Scott, a candidate for Burleson City Council, place four. Your local government leaders have a profound effect over your day-to-day life. That's why local elections are equally, if not more crucial than national elections. Your vote in local elections can determine the course of your community, especially the allocation of your tax funds. The candidates you elect will be responsible for crucial issues like taxes, public safety, infrastructure, and community development. These officials will prioritize specific programs and services. And your participation in local elections is critical if you wish to have a say in how your community is governed. These are also the ones that will listen to your concerns and take steps to assure that your community needs are met. By voting in local elections, you can feel a greater sense of influence, empowerment, connection, and community involvement, all while contributing to a more robust and representative democracy. So who holds the reins of your community's future? Voters. Who wields authority over the management of your tax dollars? Voters. How did they attain such power? By registering to vote and showing up on election day. My name is Larry Scott and I'm a candidate for Burleson City Council, place four. And I strongly encourage you to exercise your right to vote in our next city council election on Saturday, May 6.
Now I feel like I have competition for my job here. But, you know, early voting though starts what, the 24th? Is that right?
Early voting starts the 24th. I believe it goes to May 2nd.
May 2nd, yes.
And then election day is May 6 on Saturday. And my goal is to get nearly 27,000 voters out there to vote.
Uh, that's ambitious.
That's ambitious. I know 2,300 is not going to get any attention. But if we can talk to our friends, our neighbors, our family, and we can get out there as communities and go vote. And if we can get more than four, 5,000 votes, then this is something that the state and the nation will take a view of.
Well, I think that that goal is more attainable than you might think because the last election we had in August was a special timed election. You know, we don't have August elections. And the turnout there was about 2000. It's for Sean Miner and Ms. Reed against each other in the school board race. And so that got around 2,000 total. And, you know, so at an election that's not traditional, traditionally timed, they have that many votes, gives me the idea that you may get closer to 4,000. And.
I think we'll get 4,000 or 5,000. My goal is nearly 27,000. I wanted to have a high goal. I want to be ambitious. I want to get people involved in voting and controlling their city again. I know in the last two election cycles, there's been a lot of issues, a lot of Facebook bullying, a lot of mistruths, a lot of things going on that.
Really? I guess I haven't noticed that.
Haven't noticed it, that the citizens don't really want to be involved in. So I think it's turned them away from.
It is.
From the election and the city council. I think we need to get back in that direction. We need to take control of our city. And we need to be responsible in how we vote and elect people and to take care of our money.
Well, you know, on that score about, you know, the reluctance of people to get involved, I can't tell you how many people have told me they would like to have served either city or school or maybe just on committees. But they did not want to deal with all the flak that comes from the fringe yahoos, the Facebook goons, that weren't, they'll be trashing them or, or being unfair or targeting, you know, personal stuff. Now, we're not talking about the vast majority of Burleson citizens, but we got some that that's their, that's all they have to do all day, apparently.
Hopefully by the end of this election, we will have shown the citizens that you can have a fair and just election, that there will not be intimidation or we will not be intimidated.
Well, so too. And I, and this is my personal take on some of this. This idea that because somebody may have voted Democrat, therefore disqualifies you in some way, either to serve or to vote, is just, that's un-American. Okay. And just a very basic element of it. It's trash. You know, this idea that they say, well, Ronnie Johnson's really a Democrat. Well, he's not, but what if he was? So what? I mean, I want my streets clean. I want my trash picked up. I don't care if he voted for Joe Biden or not, you know? I'm not interested in that. But they're trying to make a case that Ronnie is a Democrat, as if that was like worse than being a communist or whatever else. And that kind of partisanship in the last couple of elections for mayor have really tainted these elections, in my opinion.
Well, we can't forget that we all have civil rights. We all have the right to vote and we have the right to vote without being intimidated.
Well, if people want to continue to spread gossip that Ronnie is a Republican, I'd say to them, it's not true, but who cares? You know, one way or the other, they, it's just ridiculous. And I really get bugged by the fact that good people I know that would benefit our schools and benefit our city tremendously with their talents and their integrity, don't want to have to deal with that. And I think some of these, you know, Facebookers take pride in the fact that they drive people away because it gives them relevance. And I just, that kind of relevance, I would not want to have.
You don't want to deal with that in the future.
No.
Then you need to be very careful who you elect in this election.
Right. And I, I know you're trying to be tactful, but I, I'm not quite so restrained. I think that the name calling and the accusations and insinuations, I would check out Ronnie Johnson's fact checking page, to be frank. Check out that website. And I think that's worth looking at. And it's also, who supports candidates means a lot to me as well. Okay? And if, you know, I know a lot of people that support you and I'm very comfortable with it. Now, to be frank, if you had some of these people that I'm talking about supporting you, it'd give me pause. But you don't. You have, you really have solid citizens.
Well, if I run into somebody that has issues like that, I'd like to sit down and talk to them and we can work something out, talk to them and find out where it's coming from. And go to the source and put a stop at its source. Now, we have two opposed candidates. We have Phil Anderson running against Jake Cornet. We don't want to forget about that. That's a good campaign. Both candidates are interesting. They both live in the city of Burleson and they both have qualifications. Coach is a well-known, popular individual here in town. Jake Cornet is an up and coming politician.
I'd like to have him on the show.
He's very articulate.
Well, I'd hope to have him on the show, but I honestly don't know how to contact him. And, and, you know, I guess I could go through his page, but I'd like, like to be able to have him on the show because, you know, being a young man as he is, you know, when I was teaching school, you know, I would encourage young people to get involved. I remember as a teacher, when I had three people running for school board while they were sitting in my classes, seniors, because you just have to be 18. And so I'm thinking, hey, if this kid wins, wow, his grades are going to get a lot better. But anyway, but you know, so I, you know, you might think, well, a 20-year-old kid running, is that really worth, it's, I think, noteworthy and something to be congratulated for as opposed to, you know.
Well, you have to be proud of somebody at 20 years old that's willing to step up and take that role. So Jake, here's your opening. Give Mr. Allard a call.
Yeah. And we'll, you know, I'm booked all through April, but we'll make a special date for him. You know, we'll try to do something. Maybe we'll do double duty on one day or something like that. But, you know, I think a really good example of what kind of races we'd like to see, or like we're seeing with place four for school board between Shandy and Dallas Owen and Caleb Mitchell. And because it's been courteous, it's been respectful. They have different opinion, different opinions or different, not just different opinions, it's such for different things they are emphasizing. And, and, you know, I, you know, Shandy is well-known. I'm well-known for supporting Shandy, but it isn't like, okay, Dallas wins or Caleb wins. You know, that's, Burleson won on that one. B I C won. And the other race, three, Mr. Richardson, Ryan Richardson will be on the, on here in about two weeks. Rob Duke will be on next week, I believe. I don't have my calendar in front of me, so don't hold me to that. But they're both coming on again. And what I've seen so far, it's been a very appropriately run race.
It's been a very good run race. They're all well-qualified candidates. They're all enthusiastic. I've talked to several of them. And it's going to be a tough election to vote on. I mean, you're really going to have to do your homework and make a decision. And they'll probably come down to two that you'll want to vote for and you'll have to make a decision which one.
It's better to have that kind of choice than lesser two poor choices. Like we've had the presidential races a couple of years in, like, ah, geez, I don't know who to vote for. But, you know, it's, you know, it's, that's a good problem to have. And we need more people. And we need more people like you, like Adam, like Phil and Jake, running for races, you know, like to mention the school board races, we need more people like that and we don't need to have the Facebook goons be such a factor that, that makes it their lives miserable for wanting to serve.
We, we don't need the citizens of this city to be intimidated by Facebook, by social media. So don't be intimidated by it, it's just words. It doesn't hurt. Go out, vote, let's get the communities organized, let's go out and vote, let's be the city that votes and be the city that's proud of what we've done.
What, this, this isn't happening and I don't think it will, but let's say somebody that's too ardent on your behalf goes, is inappropriate on Facebook, what would you do about it?
Well, it'd be an immediate communication between me and them.
And that, you know, but see, I hope that doesn't happen, it hasn't happened in this race at all, but there are people that are taking upon themselves in the mayor's race to be pretty intense, let's say. And I'm just, it's, I guess, I'm just a little bit tired of that kind of routine. Let's just be adults. You don't have to, we don't have to vote the same way, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been intense and the way I see it, every candidate has lived their life, they have their story to tell, but they need to tell it as it happened in real life, in time. There's no reason to change your story, there's no reason to ad lib or lie about anything. Tell the truth, be honest, tell it as you lived it and people will respect you for that and you'll get a lot more handshakes and a lot more votes doing that than you will trying to tell the citizens what you think they need to hear.
And I can't say it any better than that, so I, I'm just going to leave it there. So I always let the guests have the last word, so let us have it.
We got through this pretty quick.
Well, we've been, it's almost an hour.
Well, I have a few things to say.
Okay, no, no, that's why I gave you, we have like eight or nine minutes left, but you know, I knew you would.
We could talk all day about tax and bonds and stuff.
Ooh, it's exciting.
Running an ethical and honest campaign is essential to ensure a fair and just election process that reflects the values and interests of the community. And what I see here is, just like we talked, every candidate has their story to tell, tell it that happened in real time. Don't ad lib, don't change it. The other thing I see in this paragraph is that the citizens of Burleson are ethical, they're honest, they're just and they're fair. Therefore, it would be reasonable that you would think that they would vote for a candidate that's ethical, honest, fair and just. And that's the candidate that's going to serve the needs of their community and they need to keep that in mind when they're voting. I'm not going to tell anybody who to vote for, I'm just going to encourage you to vote. But this involves committing to truthful and transparent communication with voters, avoiding discrimination or bias, respecting the privacy and dignity of all individuals and upholding the integrity of the election system. And what I get out of this, if, if you're a candidate and you walk up to an individual's home, a citizen of the city, and you have an opposing candidate sign in their yard and your whole intent is to talk to that person and ask them why they have that sign